You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the August 25th meeting for the LaPorte County Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.AccessLaPorteCounty.org.
Good evening. I'd like to call the August 25th, 2025 regular council meeting in order. Please silence all your phones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Keel.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Otter, if you'd call the roll, please.
President Adam Karanka.
Present.
Vice President Brett Kessler.
Present.
Member Justin Keel.
Present.
Member Mike Mullenhauer.
Present.
Member Randy Novak.
Present.
Member Jimmy Pressle.
Present.
Member Mark Yagowski.
Present.
You have a quorum everybody's accounted for.
Thank you. With that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to have two corrections to this evening's agenda. On the backside, between county EMS and LaPorte County Prosecutor moved to strike LaPorte County Surveyor from the agenda. And just a minor correction, under LaPorte County Prosecutor requesting a transfer from account 2500, not 2501.
Is that for both line items?
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, it's going from 2500 to those 2501.
To those.
Okay.
Yeah.
May I suggest something?
Mr. Novak.
Also, on the Purdue Extension Office, instead of that being an additional appropriation, they'd like to transfer that out of the 100 account. They have extra funds there, so.
Do we have the account number?
We'll get it for you.
So a motion and amendment, is that a second as well?
Yes.
So a motion and second to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. With that, I'll ask for approval for the July 28th, 2025 meeting minutes.
So move, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski. Second by Mr. Pressle. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now I'll ask for public comment.
Good evening. Steve Hollifield, 678-2E, 100 South. A couple of things. Most of us probably don't know what goes on behind the scenes until we have an emergency in our lives. About 10 days ago, my mother fell in her house. She could not get up. We had to call 911. The 911 operator, Sage Kluge, was amazing. She took care of the issues. She was calm. She could answer questions if appropriate. She got the ambulances coming. First thing that happened was Lincoln Township Volunteer Fire Department First Responders Mike Lozaro. Kyle Renssberg came there, assessed the situation, took care of it, waited for the ambulance to be there, calmed my mother down, took care of what needed to be done. EMTs Ron Johnson and Jason Albin were on scene, took care of her, assessed the situation, contacted with Lincoln Township, took care of what needed to be due, took care of my mother all the way to the hospital, calmed her down, talked to her while we followed. I just think that those people need to be recognized. I want to say thank you, because again, these are people behind the scenes that until we really need them, we don't know what happens. Also, I would like to say, we have a teacher here in LaPorte, been 50 years teaching. He's the Teacher of the Year, Marty Briggs, for LaPorte. I've known this man for over 20 years. He's possibly going to be one of seven for the State Teacher of the Year Award. I'd like to recognize him if it happens. Also, some of you have probably gotten an email on September 10th between 5:30 and 7:30 at the Michigan City Hall. I'm host to another town hall. Hopefully, more of the elect can show up there. That's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm Lee Morris from 424 Upper Lake Shore Drive here in LaPorte, and I'm very pleased to have the opportunity to come and talk with you. And the topic I have is probably very small in comparison with the major topics you're dealing with, but it involves an awfully important asset of the county, one that needs preservation and protection.
I've already got one.
Several months ago, I began studying the history of the LaPorte County Courthouse. It is a remarkable history, and I'm providing you with a brief summary of it. I got a lot of information, as I did my research, with the help of many people. I got information about the tower, the clock, the materials used in the building, almost everything except the stained glass windows. And we have 82 stained glass windows in the LaPorte County Courthouse. I'd hope to be able to find out who designed them, where they were made, maybe something about the message involved in some of them. Nothing available. So with the help of Gary Ashby, who's a member of Historic LaPorte Preservation, and Jack Allen, who is a stained glass artisan, we began to look to see what could we do to learn more about these windows. And so they identified two different companies that specialize in the preservation and protection of stained glass windows. And we had each of them visit here. You know, stained glass windows are a unique thing. We learned from talking with the two companies that came just how unique this collection is and how important it is, but we also learned that it is threatened because it is in a state of deterioration. As far as we can tell, the last major attention they received was in 1986, when the large stained glass window in the Circuit courtroom was taken out and repaired significantly. Otherwise, they aren't. So they did a cursory inspection of as many windows as we could find in the building that were available to view, and they discovered there were a lot of problems with the windows. We have some rotted framework. We have cracks. We have missing pieces of glass. We have solder that has deteriorated significantly. There's nothing absolutely drastic and threatening at the moment, but it's on the way to that. So we feel that it would be extremely important for the county to preserve and protect this remarkable collection of stained glass windows. And this is the proposal that we've been looking at. We would hope that we might be able to, following the proper procedure, select a company to come in and do a complete photographic inventory of all of the stained glass windows and identifying whatever repairs or concerns there are about each of them. And then that inventory could be the basis for setting up what we think would be appropriate, a 10-year plan for getting those windows up into condition so that they are preserved and protected for generations to come. That way, it's not a financial burden on any one fiscal year, and we're trying to get the ones that are most important done on a priority basis going through. We think the cost of that inventory will be somewhere in the neighborhood, depending on how extensive we want it to be, $5,000 and $14,000. We believe probably that more on the $5,000 range is what we're looking for, but that could be negotiated. We've talked with the commissioners about this, and the commissioners felt there were too many other intervening needs or funds, and they declined to act upon the motion to approve proceeding with that inventory. We still believe that's so important, and one of the commissioners recommended that we come and talk with you about it so that you would know what it is we hope to do and why we want to do it. It may be possible for us to find some funds elsewhere to do the inventory, but what we were concerned about was, if we do the inventory and there's not a willingness to support a plan to preserve and protect the windows over a period of time, it's a waste of money. The inventory goes on a shelf and is forgotten. So what I'd like to suggest to you is give some thought to whether the council is in a position and willing to consider supporting like a 10-year plan, and obviously, that would be worked out with you and the commissioners as to what dollars each year and so on, so that we can overcome this issue of deterioration of those windows. If you're comfortable with doing that, then we'll work harder on trying to supplement whatever funds the county can provide, if any, for the inventory, and we'll get this project underway and get it done. So I hope you'll give that some consideration. I thank you very much for the opportunity to come and speak with you about it.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
FYI, for your information, so like 13 or 14 years ago, we did the court, the courts on the, we moved the third court upstairs. We found that the canopy, which is still stained glass, was painted over in the '60s, so that was all renovated, just if you want.
Yeah, and we had a lot of those windows that were covered up with false ceilings for many, many years.
Yeah, but we did spend money and rent it. We did spend money and rent it at that point.
We're so fortunate that Dr. Peter Kessling made it possible for us to illuminate those windows, so many of us kind of appreciate them. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments, and I think this is timely, and I would hope that the commissioners would reconsider on this. You're right, we are in a fiscal situation that demands our attention, but this county also spends about $110 million a year, and I think that there's probably room in there somewhere for something like this. Those stained glass windows in that courthouse are a part of our collective heritage. There's never going to be another courthouse like that built ever again. That's the only one we got, so it's worth making sure we maintain those things. If there was interest on the council, I would make a motion that we encourage the commissioners to reconsider, just a friendly invite to that.
A motion to encourage?
Yeah. That's about as flimsy as it gets, but it's worth a start.
I just suggest that somebody goes to the commissioners' meeting instead. I mean, if you want to go to commissioners', just go to commissioners' meeting and make a presentation. That would be more effective than a friendly motion to consider.
I don't think I'm the one to give the presentation. I think the folks that are...
But if you're going to go, they're going to, if you should represent the council and go to the meeting and present your case, this motion would not mean anything. Friendly motion to consider doesn't mean a lot. Somebody should go to the meeting if that's the case. Anyway.
So that's where I'll leave it.
Got a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I think it's, forgive me, I think it's just light, a motion to have them reconsider, but I would do a motion of support on this and send it back to the commissioners. That way, with a motion saying that, hey, you know, we support this, because asking them to reconsider if we're not taking a stance on something...
That's even less flimsy than what I suggested. I like it.
I like it, so I'll second it.
So my original motion to, a motion to support, and we'll find a way to find the funding if the commissioners reconsider it.
So I've got a motion from Mr. Keel. I think I've got seconds between Mr. Novak and Mr. Kessler. All in favor of a motion of support to send back to the commissioners? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Do I have any further public comment? With that, moving on to department head reports.
All right.
More paperwork.
Yeah, more paperwork. We didn't ask for homework. Homework.
It's information.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks, Darlene.
Before this tale gets started, the county council, just for your FYI information, we met with this ITG group in, in our grade in technology. By default, we didn't, nobody knows them, nobody knew them. They ended up getting a job over here for a project over in LaPorte City, and so we got a reference to them by, through the means of that. So when we, you guys had asked earlier, a few months back, if we had any solutions to try to find savings. We'll go into the spiel, saw that Darlene talk, and then we'll go after that.
So currently, we have a contract, yearly contract with Kemp's to, you know, do our maintenance of our large copiers. We purchase them outright, they maintain them at a cost per page, whether it's black and white or color. This company is proposing that they come in for free, do an analysis, and also do a proposal for maintenance and copiers, you know, at a cost, well, we would have to purchase copiers through this company, and then they would maintain them at a cost per page. So that way, we have a comparison of, you know, who is going to be cheaper and have the best service. So we're just asking, can we have them come in, do the, do the analysis for free, and then give us a proposal so we can look at it for budgets?
So about 15 so years ago, we did this same project. It worked out real well, and that's how we were able to develop the process we have up till now, but of course, it's been 15 years, and technology's changed across the board in the 15 years that we did it. This would just give us, if at the worst, gives us an insight to what we have for usage and what we can fix. If we take their numbers just by what they already proposed, the black and white, for example, we have 2,300 pages we print a year, believe it or not, in the county, just for your FYI, for your information, that savings would be $23,000 in black and white, $8,000 in color. I mean, also, we get a surcharge over here, which is a allotment charge of $53,000. So right now, if we didn't do anything but just use their equipment, it'd be $85,000 in savings, and if not, at least use it for a tool to renegotiate with Kemp. So what we're asking for is just to do this lot, and by next month, we'll put itself on the agenda. They believe in one month, they'd be able to interview and give you, all of us, a report.
No cost, no obligation.
No cost, no obligation.
No.
And currently, with Kemp's, we have a set allotment. We don't, you know, we don't pay every month at how many prints we have.
We do pay that $53,000.
But it's $53,000 a year for that allotment. These people are proposing that we would pay for actual, so if we don't print 2 million copies, then that allotment is to still 2 million copies. You know, we still pay the same amount of money, where these guys are proposing that we pay per print for actual costs.
There's some other caveats, is they give every department their cost for the year. You could try to shame them in spending less. For example, that's one cent for black.
To print us.
It's one cent for black. It's one cent for black and white, seven cents for color. So if we can convince them not to do color, that's just, that adds up to some savings. Yeah.
So, I mean, that's kind of what we're looking at, trying, just trying to save money.
Oh, yeah, and they are a little, they're an outcart, so they can, they can have, they can respond within two to four hours here. They also like the idea that we have an IT group, so they would actually give us extra, if we went into the program, extra copiers, so we could just wheel it into the office till they got there. But they would respond within two to four hours if they needed to be to get their right now. They have a vicinity from Chicago all the way to, all the way to the Ohio border that they take care of.
Sounds promising.
So I make, I like to know, I guess, if you have to have a motion, if everyone's agree, but can we, I'm asking if we can do this audit.
So currently, we're just looking at costs.
Yeah.
You know, for budget purposes.
To be honest...
Any contract or anything like that would have to go through the commission.
Correct.
I'm just asking, can I have them come in at no charge to maybe give us a cost comparison and maybe have Kemp's do a better...
Motion to approve.
Cost.
Second, cheapest appropriation of the night.
Yeah, right?
Right?
My only, my only item for discussion is, is what prevents other departments from actually doing this without having to come to the council? Because realistically, I don't see why we would need permission to have them come in and review in terms of provided proposals.
There isn't, but they're going to tell you, like they told us today, they go, guess what? They're not going to like it. They're going to tell you that, I don't use anybody's office in particular, but do they really need that desktop? We're going to give them what we believe. The reason why it is, because people don't like change, and I'm going to tell you that 15 years ago, it was very difficult. It's going to be as difficult this time around.
Understood.
Currently, the small printers, desktop printers, is a free-for-all. They kind of just buy what they want. We don't have those under maintenance. This is for the copier. I mean, Kemp's, we don't even have the small printers under maintenance.
They're not worth it.
It's for the large. They are proposing a small printer thing, too, to where they would actually give us printers as long as we paid per page maintenance. So you'd have to weigh the cost on toner and whatnot, and cost of printers versus paying per page.
All right. So I have a motion of support provided by Mr. Novak, second by Mr. Keel. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jeremy Sabecki from the Parks Department. I had a few things to give, but you have a pretty busy agenda, so I'll save one for another, another time, but I wanted to update everyone on some of the things that our Park Foundation has been doing the past couple of years, real quickly, or I'll keep this brief, as some would say. So last year at Bloom County Park, they replaced a, we replaced the boardwalk, but they paid for it, replaced a deteriorated boardwalk for $7,500. They paid for $10,000 worth of invasive species treatments, replaced the broken concrete near the Grove Shelter for $1,200, replaced the Grove Shelter roof for $12,000, and they also, and we also enclosed the grove, the ceiling in the Grove Shelter so that the birds were not nesting up there anymore and causing issues for us. So that was around $35,000 that they put into Bloom County Park, and that was last year. This year, at Luer County Park, they, they do have endowments for both Luer and Bloom County Park, so we typically try to focus on one park at a time, because a lot of times we don't have the staff to do a bunch of projects at both. So this year, at Luer County Park, we have a contract awarded for $5,000 in invasive species removal. We're working on composite, or we're working on decking and boardwalks that are deteriorated there as well for $13,000, and then the tower that was there, we had to tear down because it was deteriorated. It was a viewing tower for the wetland. That was, we're estimating that to be around $25,000. They also paid for $15, or 15 acres of prescribed burning for $2,600, so they've agreed to pay for about $45,000 worth of projects at Luer this year. And then at their last meeting, they agreed to purchase a golf cart for us, for one of our, a utility-type golf cart with a dump bed and, you know, the ones you see in our parks. That was $11,600, and they also agreed to pay for the Novak Shelter roof and siding, which is $18,800. Yeah, yeah.
No relation. No relation.
And that was $18,800, so about $30,000 worth of commitments for Creek Ridge County Park. With that golf cart, we're replacing, we had two Kawasaki mules that were from like 1999 and 2001, and we would keep, try to keep them running, and, you know, they run, they work. We use them daily, but they're getting to the point where we wanted to get rid of those. So those were items that we had, and we offered them up to, you know, FMEC or whoever needs them.
Extension office.
Extension office. So if they need help keeping, you know, learning how to get them to coax them to run, give us a call. But yeah, if you use them daily, and my suggestion is, run them daily, you know, and they will, they will keep running for, I can't guarantee anything, but the price was right, right?
We appreciate it.
We appreciate that, so.
But anyway, our Park Foundation kind of works in the background a lot of times, but they are putting a lot of money into these parks that people notice and see, that, and between our people able to do that work and their money, we're able to do a lot of things that I don't have to come to you and beg and plead for money, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional department heads?
Good evening, council. Guy DiMartino, you miss me? You know, when I come...
Nice leading. We can't say in front of our current council.
Doug, don't, don't feel bad. I'm going to be coming before you for two, for two matters today. You know, since this whole insurance thing came about over the last years, I've been involved tangentially in a lot of the building issues and the maintenance, and so the Maintenance Department's going to come before you this evening for an additional appropriation of $250,000, but I need to tear the Band-Aid off now. We need a lot more money than that. We have $250,000 that were proximally in the rears. We have about $350,000 that's coming in for work that was done, and then we have another four months this year. So you can get your ammunition, and when I come back, you can just take your shots. The second thing that I'm coming up to you for today, and you know Shakespeare, right? Kill all the lawyers. First thing, I'm asking, we're going to, commission's going to be asking for an additional $150,000 for legal fees. So if you have any questions for that, I will try to answer them when we get back. Thank you.
Thank you. One last call for department heads. Going once, going twice. Moving on, liaison reports. Mr. Mullenhauer.
Okay, I just got several things, three things, I think. August 20th, I attended two events, the first being a special meeting with the Solid Waste District Board members and staff regarding complaints of service by the present vendor board, and they had quite a few things to resolve before the meeting, and we went through it and I think resolved a couple of other issues. So things, I think, are progressing pretty well, and hopefully, why things will make a complete turnaround. Second meeting was at Baker Tilly, which I know some of you were there. It was sponsored by Mayor Tom Girmody regarding the, excuse me, information concerning the legislative changes to our property taxes. And of course, they spoke tonight again, but, and then, third thing is, I attended the council-commissioner joint executive session on August 21st. And then the last thing is, that I need to report on, is I'm saddened to report, and I think probably most of you heard about it, a loss from the LaPorte County Sheriff's Department and Merit Commission Board. Mrs. Louise Mock passed away recently. She was a member from 1999 to the present, 2025, so she's had just a little over 27 years on, on the board, and she's going to be greatly, greatly, greatly missed, and prayers go to her family. Also, I think she was, or I know she was on the Fire Department, Michigan City Fire Department Merit Board for some time, and also...
Very nice lady.
Yes.
Very nice.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Keel.
Very briefly, the highlights of my month. I attended the NERC Seaford Commission meeting that was last Thursday. There was also a presentation by the state IT office afterwards. I relate some findings from that to Darlene. I was not able to make the Baker Tilly meeting, but I did read the slides, and I spoke with some of the smaller towns in my council district about the impacts that they'll be facing and made sure they got a copy of those slides if they hadn't already gone. I attended Milfes, Milpon Fest yesterday and ended up having breakfast with Rob Sabey from EMA, so we chatted about his department, their new vehicle, how things were going. Spoke with my liaison assignments, particularly the surveyor's office and the recorder's office, and then several others that I'm not a liaison to. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Novak.
Real quick, regular things, the RDC spoke with, had a 911 Advisory Board meeting. FMEC, the Extension, spoke with Extension about the thing on the agenda tonight and other items, and the maintenance meetings that we routinely have, and the finance meeting, so.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Pressle.
Sir, hit up FMEC, got back on track with our regular meetings now after fair. Went to the Finance Committee Overview Meeting with Mr. Mullenhauer and Mr. Karanka. I'd like to thank City of LaPorte for putting that on, getting the schools there. I think it really helped enlighten a lot of people on what's happening. Community Corrections Board met, and last one, Plan Commission, we didn't have a meeting, but I do want to make everybody aware that we are in, in the works of our comprehensive plan still. We're in the position where we're getting stakeholders put together to get some input from different sectors of the county. So we've got utilities on there, housing people on there, education systems on there, nonprofit groups, smaller municipalities, so gathering a bunch of information from everybody and get that in motion.
Thank you. Mr. Yagowski.
Yeah, I just recently went to a data center over in Hammond, and I know that fortunately, I don't know if Michigan City did it properly with the idea of keeping it secret at first and saying they were against it and saying they were for it, but if you, that snowball got so big, I got 16 mails, mailings today, eight for my wife, eight for myself, and there's no, doesn't tell you where it came from against the data center, and so they, somebody's financing the heck out of this thing. I know that there's probably some stories that are out that are true. I don't know of them, but I've heard of them, but the one that we went to was not at all compared to anything we talked about. The water consumption was not utilized like they said it was. They have, they have a water bill less than almost what a household would be. It's only for... It's only for toilet flushing and that. They don't use it for cooling, that type of purpose. The noise level, we went outside, it was 85 decibels outside where the fans were at. That's close to the building. There's nothing close around there. So the sound dissipates, of course, as you walk away from it. I'm not here as a cheerleader for it, but I'm also understanding that if we don't embrace technology, we'll be the last people around here that will, that will, it will hurt us because foreign countries are doing it right now. In a nutshell, because people don't quite understand what a data center is, we're taking this building right now and I'm just going to lease out this corner and that quarter and we'll quarter it here. And these people lease it out for their, for their computers and stuff. Everything's on backup. So you have a power supply, the backup's a power supply. You have a switch that backfires a switch, so on and so forth. So they make sure that they have continuous power for those purposes. Again, they rent that lease, they rent or lease that out. That demand has increased times 10, times 10 in just the last few years. So I would hope that we don't necessarily hear all the romings in the back and people get a chance to research it more. I still plan on doing more research. I have appointment met with NIPSCO because I want to find out exactly what that means electric rate wise. That's the only question I have, not answer this point. But I know when that snowball starts down that hill, it gets big and it's gotten out of hand. I think there's just a lot of misinformation. Again, I'm not a cheerleader for it. It's been proposed to look at it and I'll do my due diligence for LaPorte County, but I'm not going to overreact until I find the facts. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kessler.
I'll keep mine pretty short and brief. We've had a few finance committee meetings here in the last month, obviously with budget and whatnot. And then we've had a couple of meetings. Councilman Novak sat in with me on the small animal shelter, still trying to get things ironed out, out there. And other than that, I mean, talking to a few department heads and whatnot, and that's what I got.
All right. Yeah, I would say it was part of the data center review with Mr. Yagelski. RDC is normal. Obviously, as Mr. Pressler mentioned, the Baker Tilly review. And one thing they want to highlight there is with the changes that are coming due to legislature, we have changes where the council would have the opportunity to have local income tax, but then you have the cities and towns that have their own that would be part of that. And it was best to have that discussion collaboratively. City of Michigan City, City of LaPorte, some of the libraries, the small towns were all part of this discussion. And then met with a few of my other assigned departments. So with that, we'll close liaison reports. Moving on to correspondence.
For correspondence, we've received the LaPorte County Sheriff's Commissary Fund Report. Everybody received a copy of it. Also, as part of, for budgetary purposes, we received a sworn statement from a quarter builder back, which clearly states that there's enough funds that she's going to utilize them for, to pay for expenses in the year 2026. It's actually a statutory requirement that she supplies that information to the council.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions. Let's talk about an ordinance to adopt request to use Recorder's Perpetuation Fund to cover office expenses and salaries in 2026.
Motion. Oh, she's going to speak for it.
Yeah, let her speak.
Hi, that's my annual pilgrimage for you guys to vote on the ordinance. It's, as Mike mentioned, as part of the sworn statement and the ordinance, it's just a package deal. You have to have it, otherwise I'm not allowed to use the funds from the perpetuation fund. So this is basically, you know, a must do. I'm hoping you can do it in one reading as we always do and move on.
All right.
Any questions for me?
A question. Could you speak about the sustainability of the rate that we're spending out of this fund? Are we going to be able to keep at this level next year or should we expect that it be decreased?
Unless we have a disaster, then no. If we just keep spending, next year we're probably okay. But as time goes by, I believe that it will eventually run into the issue of spending too fast. And at that point, more of the expenses end up coming from the general fund, which then will hurt you guys. And so at some point, we'll have to revisit that and see just how sustainable that is because I am concerned that eventually that may not be a good idea. And I need to, as you know, with the sworn statement, I have to be able to replace whatever needs to be replaced. Let's say we have a disaster like the courthouse had. I need to have the funds to cover what needs to be replaced so that I can quickly get back to business. So, yeah. So I have to have the backup money and then, of course, the money for anything else that may need to be done.
Mr. President, make a motion for ordinance number 2025-.
Eight.
Eight, to read by title only.
Second. Motion to read by title only by Mr. Yagelski, second by Mr. Novak. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? By title only.
Ordinance 2025-8, an ordinance to adopt request to use Recorder's Perpetuation Fund to cover office expenses and salaries.
With pleasure of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Mr. Novak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mullenhour. Any discussion? All motion, all in favor of approving?
Discussion, this is supposed to be ordinance only, but by one, I don't understand why she said it has to be. It's an ordinance. Oh, oh, that's why, that's why I'm going. Let's back up. Oh, we could, we can do the first reading, finish that. Yeah. Yeah. Follow up.
All right, so all in favor.
Just a second question.
Mr. Auditor, we have another resolution coming up that has 2025-8 on it.
It's a resolution, this is an ordinance.
Okay.
That's the only difference. Otherwise, I'd agree totally with you.
That's fine. We just happen to be on the same.
All good?
All good.
All in favor of approving ordinance number 2025-8, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and have a second reading tonight.
Motion to suspend the rule for a second reading by Mr. Novak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kessler. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, public hearing identifying.
You got to vote on it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you're right. If it was.
Approved the first reading, you got to approve.
But we approved the first motion.
But we suspended the second reading, but you still have to.
We have to have a reading in a second.
Yes, okay. No, you're right. You're right.
Motion to suspend, motion to suspend the, or to read by title only. He's saying suspend. I'm, motion to read by title only. Ordinance 2025-.
All right, so a motion to a second.
Yes, sir.
Motion and second read by title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Could I read the title, please? You're taking away my moment.
You're too slow.
Ordinance 2025-8, in accordance to adopt request to use Recorder's Perpetuation Fund to cover office expenses and salaries, period.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Novak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kessler. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Didn't mean to step on your toes.
Thank you. All right. Now, public hearing identifying confirming portions of LaPorte County, Indiana be designated as an economic revitalization area. Let's ask Mr. Reardon, just come to the stand.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council members, I'd ask, open up this public hearing regarding the creation of an economic revitalization area for those who do know and don't know. This is the mechanism that allows for the approval of a statement of benefits and a tax abatement to be granted to the investor in the county. This is, of course, as a directive of this county, you are very specific on the areas that you target. This is 13.37 acres of property located at Third Line Road and Hupp in Kingsbury. The petitioner is 2M Shop Group. Mr. Dolder is here. They're going to invest approximately 6.9, 6.5 to, if you add up their existing personal property, it gets a little bit over about $8.2 million in total investment. Why is this important? One, helps drive new assessed valuation into the community. Two, creates jobs at a location that there aren't any jobs yet today. Currently, this operation is located in the city of LaPorte, in a location that the city of LaPorte's not too happy about them being at the location. So sometimes it actually works out when you're looking for space to expand on. This particular company is choosing to make an investment in the county in a new facility and purchase property. And current payroll is seven, current payroll is $490,000 with seven employees. They're proposing to have an, add another seven and create another 490,000. Currently, as I like to do, I like to go to the existing conditions. So the existing conditions, there are no jobs. The total tax, annual tax is paid is $374.84. This particular investment over time is targeted to be, and what I'll need the council to do is to include this documentation as you go forward. Over the term of the proposed abatement for five years, this will generate property tax revenue of an estimated $965, $1,000 rather, a little bit more than 374. The petitioner would save around $330,000. They've also discussed, and as the council recalls, there is a percentage of savings that can be applied to an abatement. And while it's nice that the state allows that, tracking that for 10 years is not fun for the auditor's office. It's not fun for the company. So what we typically recommend from the Office of Economic Development is that we take the estimate of savings and we split it in half. And so the fee associated with this particular project would be $12,412 for the approval of the abatement. If the council has any questions specifically of the petitioner or the project, the owner's here to answer any questions. I think it's better to hear from them than me about why they're doing it, why they think LaPorte's important and what their plans and timeline is. So if you do, Mr. Dolder's here. If you don't, that's all we have. Thank you.
All right. So this time I should open a public hearing and in order to address any questions to the property owner. At this point, we'll call it a public hearing. And start with any presentation from the property owner?
You have to, you have to repeat it three times and end it. Then you got to.
Do we have to read?
Public hearing. Public hearing has to be three times.
All right.
Public hearing, three times.
Okay. Doug, you give me a little guidance here, please. For opening public hearing, what do we need to do first?
There you go. Done.
Public hearing's open.
Public hearing's open. Now.
Anybody from the public that wants to be?
Okay, so we'll open it to public. So I apologize, we'll open it up to the public if anybody has any, anything for or against or any questions regarding this, or this resolution.
Sit down.
Please. Apologize. Anybody from the public?
There's no.
You hit it again and you're closed.
All right.
There's no members from the public that have questions. I do have two.
All right, then I'll open it to the council. Public hearing closed. Now. Questions? Yes, sir.
Two questions. First one is, and this could be for either the property owner or for Mr. Reardon, but I noticed that when I was looking at the parcel for this, it includes up to the center line of Hupp Road and I think it's, is it Third Line Road or Second Line Road, one of those. The county's been, RDC's been trying to acquire ownership of the roads. Would you be open or would you entertain transferring the ownership of the road to the county as part of this?
Yes. And by the way, my name is Michael Dolder. Do you have my address or anything? 821 West 139th Avenue, Cedar Lake, Indiana.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, definitely.
Fantastic.
There's an easement already on the.
Okay.
Survey.
Great. And then a second question. The labor that you plan to use to construct this project is, or will it be union labor or skilled apprenticeships? What type of labor will you be using for this?
For the construction?
Yes.
It'll be someone local here, contractors, locals. So I'm not sure what the affiliations are.
Okay.
So I haven't, we haven't made that decision yet. We're still, we're finishing up our due diligence. We haven't closed on the property yet, but as soon as we do that, then we'll go into the detailed design. We're looking at trade-offs. Right now, we lease a building right across the tracks and, you know, for example, we've got a 20-ton crane in there and 10-ton cranes and stuff. So for the, for the long term, it'd be nice to increase maybe 25, 30-ton capacity on our cranes, additional lift height, wider bays. So all those trade-offs and we've, we've had soil borings performed. So, you know, what are the costs for the foundations with the heavier loads, all those? So we've got some analysis to do yet for our final design. But we've got the room out there with the 13.4 acres or 3.4, whatever, but we have room out there and the proper zoning and we feel it'd be a great place to be, so.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
May for.
Yes. Of course, my job's not to, not to tell you what to do, but just as a suggestion, I can tell you that Matt knows this, and I know this, but by the industry standards, there really is not good crane, heavy crane services around here. I would, you know, just as a proposal, it'd be nice if you could extend the thing, maybe lease it out for so many years because you have the same building. Because I can tell you right now that I know for a fact that we can bring some other businesses in that might want to marry up with you. But crane, crane is a hard, detailed service to have. We don't have them in LaPorte County, just to mention.
Sorry, I'm not sure I understand.
So if you have a bay long, say you're going to use X feet, if you extended the bay and leased it out, I'm just, it might be a suggestion you, if you ask Matt, there are, I've had people beg me for crane usage buildings.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's something that's not available in, anywhere in Porter County or our own facility. And St. Joe County's been packed to the gills right now, so I'm just, just as a comment.
That's why it's an important investment. I mean, we, you know, we have, sometimes we have to sub out work.
Sure.
To other people because we don't have the capacity there.
Sure.
And we just put something down in southern Indiana in the last month because people around here couldn't handle the capacity.
Sure. Thank you very much.
So specifically, you're looking for high bay equipment, manufacturing, equipment assembly, those sorts of things.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
That's what we do, sir. Thank you.
So with that, in consideration of the resolutions that sits before us, we have resolution 2025-8.
Make motion to read by title only.
Motion to read by title only by Mr. Yagelski, second by Mr. Kessler. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution number 2025-8. A resolution of the LaPorte County Council identifying confirming portions of LaPorte County, Indiana be designated as an economic revitalization areas pursuant to IC 6-1.1-12.1-1 at SEC.
Motion to approve. Motion approved by Mr. Yagelski, second by Mr. Novak. Any discussion? All right. All in favor of approving resolution 2025-8, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd ask that you also approve the statement of benefits form that comes along with resolution. You can't approve a statement of benefits until the economic revitalization area is approved and you can't do that until the public hearing. So we're just following an order. The statement of benefits indicates what the petitioner will do, the level of investment. It's what the auditor's office has used to set up a baseline. I'd like to draw your attention to the second page of that. It talks about the number of years of abatement and we will kind of work this out.
When I say work it out, we'll fill it out and give it to the auditor. Recommendation, it's not that they can't do it, but it's a five-year abatement. So you have to fill out the back of the form and it has to be signed. And then it talks about the fee to the county of 12,412 as the, uh, other limitations and conditions.
Matt, just one quick question on that.
Sure.
On the fee schedule we received from you.
Yeah.
It says total contribution 24, 821.
So what, what I'm recommending is that instead of waiting the, over the time period.
Over the 10.
Divided by two and take half.
Gotcha.
Then the, yeah, that's, otherwise you're, they have to track it. Company has to track it. You get it upfront and, you know, the, that's a.
Yep.
Staggering amount of money next to the existing property taxes of, no offense, $374.
They hit the hour.
Still good.
Do we need to prove this tonight or is this?
Yes, sir.
We should approve.
One and done.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the.
Statement of benefits.
Statement of benefits, real estate improvements. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Did you sign both?
Thank you.
Not just put the check in five years.
All right. Moving on. Old, new business. Wanata Public Library, additional appropriation.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the council, and thank you for allowing me to speak to you for a few, for a few minutes. My name is Don Parker. I'm a 30-year resident of Wanata and I'm the director of the Wanata Public Library. This all got started, uh, last year because the way the budget cycle works, um, we had passed our budget for this year. And then I, when I told the, uh, library board that I expect to retire in another year or two, um, they got, started to look really seriously at what we pay, um, in order to attract a decent candidate when I am gone. And so they decided to raise the salaries of everybody in the, um, Wanata Cass Township Public Library District, which is just Cass Township, by, um, amount, an amount which I told them, well, this will exceed our budget for the year. So we're going to have to take this to an additional appropriation. Um, then we got to looking as, as the legislature started to do the things it was doing with property taxes. And we have put off, um, uh, replacing badly worn and old meeting room furniture. And we upgraded our meeting room so that it was something that could be used for full three-way teleconferencing, um, with an ARPA grant during the, the pandemic. And, um, the, um, board said, well, since we know we have the money to do this and it's, we haven't had any surprises in our budget this year, we're going to have to go back for the additional appropriation on the salaries anyway. Let's add some furnishings to this additional appropriation, which we know we need to get done, but it's outside of our normal budget. So the total that we're asking for is $25,000. Uh, 15,000 of that is, um, salaries. It's actually more than we're going to need, but we put a little bit of a cushion in there. Uh, it's more like 12,000 additional that we're going to need for salaries. About 8,000 for furniture and about, uh, 2,000 for miscellaneous. And so that comes to 25,000. A little bit more background that you may or may not care about, about 15 years ago, when the, um, um, property tax situation was going on, like a lot of entities, we exhausted our cash reserves. We had to do several years of borrowing. Once we got those loans paid off, we deliberately spent about 10 years writing budgets that had a, we were only planned to spend about 90% of the budget. So we've been able to build back those cash reserves over the last 10 years or so. And so we're comfortable. Uh, if you're wondering where the property tax situation is going to take us, we're going to be comfortable for the next couple of years, probably not grow our budgets at all. I'm expecting our budget to grow by about 1% this coming year and our, um, property tax, um, um, draw to be about a 1.25% increase. After, by the time we get to 2030, we don't know where we're going to be, probably any more than anybody does. But, um, this is a, we figure let's get this out of the way since we know we need to do it and the situation with our furniture is only going to get worse. Um, that's it. I hope I haven't bored you too much. Do you have any questions?
The only question I have is, so you've talked about your surplus in your budget, but you haven't talked about it in amount.
Well, the, I'm sorry, did you want to know the amount of our budget for the year?
No, the remainder, remainder of your cash reserves. How does that fit into your cash reserves?
Um, it, it will come out of our cash reserves because our cash reserves are, are, we judge to be fully built back up at this point. So it's something that we can afford to spend.
Because, yes. So it, forgive me, most of our, most of the business that we conduct here is going to be related to county monies, right? Outside of what you have.
Oh, you are, you are our fiscal agent. You are our fiscal review body. I'm sorry.
Yes. So when it comes down to it, what's left of, so of the, of the cash reserves, what's left after we pull this 25,000 out?
Um, by the end of the year, after the property tax draw, we expect to have about $224,000.
Okay.
In reserves.
Nope.
Roughly a little more than two years, uh, budgets.
Okay. Any further questions from the council?
Just really quick up. Sorry. I'm asking the same question you did. Generally, it's over and above if you're, if you're dealing with, if you're, within your tax lane, your, your increase this year was what, 4% was additional?
Yep. Was right at 4%.
Did you, are you going over that 4%?
No. No, no.
Then that's not the salary I can understand.
Well, the, the, well, the, um, because the council has, is required to review both our expenditures and under state law, only for libraries, the council is required to review both our expenditures and tax draw if it goes above 4%.
Correct.
Yeah.
So this is going to go above 4%?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, this isn't a change to your levy. This is a, this is an additional appropriation. So they have, they have a cash balance, just like we do, that isn't budgeted each year that carries forward. And, uh, Mr. Parker is, uh, asking for.
The draw.
To spend some of that cash savings.
All our money, yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? That, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on, HR Director Monique Thomas, job evaluation committee recommendations. Have two of them. One for E911, assistant director salary be removed off the scale and classified as an unclassified position with exempt status. Recommended salary, $74,000 annually. The second, we have adult probation classifying the MC, Adult Probation Secretary from a Comet four to a Comet five. Is there anyone representing HR or the job evaluation committee tonight?
Nobody's on our, nobody's on our Zoom. Can y'all have anybody since here?
No, uh, on Zoom, there's no one on Zoom.
Dylan, would you mind checking the, there's nobody in waiting room?
Who's on the committee?
Randy and me.
Okay. You guys, you guys can present it. You guys talk about it today.
Yeah.
I'm just.
You can. Are you prepared?
I, so I'll take the 911, one and Jimmy can take the other one. So basically, uh, the assistant director of the 911 center, the director is here. Come on down. So, um, the assistant director, he's kind of unique because he's not in a, correct me if I'm wrong, be exempt. He's not an exempt employee. So he's still getting steps. So he continues to catch Barb. If anybody that's been around, we had to deal with this in the past.
Right.
And he keeps catching the directors. Um, so the, the idea is, is to move him to an exempt position to, to cover everything that's there. And, um, it's in a nutshell.
He's also the only in the county that I know of. He's the only.
Number two.
Assistant director in the longevity step program.
Right.
Everybody else is, if it's an assistant, they're not in longevity.
So Ms. Houston, does he get overtime?
He does not.
No, he does not. Although it, although Mark, another technicality, that is a pole position and by rights he should because everyone else in the pole position does get overtime, but Matt does not.
Is this a unique thing to the same situation with data? We had a, the employee that, that in reference to, sorry about that, Mr. President.
My assistant director is exempt and at 85%.
Does he get overtime?
He's exempt.
He's exempt.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
I know we can look it up, but you might know off the top of your head, but what is his salary currently? How much of an increase is it?
67, 67, 575 or something like that.
$67,445.
Thank you.
And you, you wanted to be, you want the salary to 74,000?
Yes.
Which would be right by you?
The reason being, uh, the reason that we picked that, I picked that amount, Mark, is because if he's left in the longevity program for the, uh, up to and including 27 years, he would be making $73,311.
But isn't that, isn't that right by your salary?
Yes, it is.
What is yours presently?
That makes difficult.
What's your salary?
73.
Wait. So you wouldn't be.
Your salary is 73? So you're setting his salary above yours?
Well, not actually. I've also asked for the increase. According to, uh, Councilman Earl Cunningham, a couple of years ago, he requested 5,000 this year and 5,000 next. And I did put that in the budget. I haven't heard back from any of you.
Right.
That's why I went.
If we were to follow that, this would be right in line.
Yes.
I got a question. I don't think it's in line because even at 78,000, which if it's okay and you go to that, now maybe my math's wrong, but, and I know you mentioned 85% or somebody said, said that.
That's, that's data.
That's $66,300, isn't it?
No, no, that's data. That's not me.
No, I was comparing.
Didn't have a chief deputy.
I was comparing.
I'm just comparing it with second in command, so to speak, and chief deputies, they get eight, 85%.
Assistant director.
That wouldn't be that.
Is what matters.
Unless my math's wrong, that's way out of line.
I'm not asking for 85% Mike.
I know you're asking for more than that.
He's saying he's dangerously close to your salary. That's what he's saying, uh, that number.
Yeah. My impression was that this was, that the 74,000 figure was to be 85% of the director's salary.
No.
Which is what's in line with other departments where it's 85%.
No.
That's elected officials generally.
Not necessarily.
So might I recommend, well, hold on, gentlemen, gentlemen, please. With the fact that we've got two facets to this, we have the director's salary request that's in for the budgets and we have this one. Would I, I recommend that we hold this over till, until we have the discussions, when we have, figure out what we're going to do with the 100 accounts across county. Does that seem out of line with anybody?
No.
Then let's hold this over till budgets and include this as one of the requests for 911 budget. Mr. Otter?
You need to table it then?
So.
Officially table it?
I think we.
Motion to hold it over till our budget. Till the, till the.
We have to.
It's part of.
Because we'd have to open it up to table. Yeah, we move it to, move it to the workshops for the budgets and.
If we table it during.
Remove it from, from the agenda, I guess.
Good point. Mr. President, if we table that, we can't open it during the workshop.
Exactly. That's why I'm trying not to.
Why can't we open it during workshop?
Because it's a workshop, not a public meeting.
Yes.
The workshop is a public meeting.
Well, it's not.
Okay. We'll just.
Not a council.
Just hold it over.
Doug, are we good?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Thanks, Barb.
Thank you, Barb. Um, let's move on to the adult probation, Comet four to Comet five for the Michigan City Adult Probation Secretary. Anything?
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Lynn Swanson, Deputy Chief Probation Officer, Michigan City Division of Laporte County Adult Probation.
Okay.
Um, the purpose for requesting this is because Comet fours are not available or able to take finances in and deposit them at the bank. So we only have one, um, support staff that is a Comet five that can do that. And when she's not available, we're unable to collect those adult user fees and, um, receipt them and deposit them in the bank. So we're asking that, that Comet four be moved to a Comet five so that both of our support staff can do those functions.
And you have the funds to do this?
I'm sorry?
It's all within your funds.
Um, I asked Mr. Iraik that and, uh, he stated that it's, he's put it in his budget for next year, but not paid out of user fees. And he said if that was a question, that it would have to be brought up to him at a later date.
Motion to hold this one over to budget.
Same thing, yeah. All right.
I'm the next.
I don't need a motion, but I.
Hold it over. So we're going to recommend to hold these over till budgets.
Okay. I'm the next part of the agenda too.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now moving on to appropriations, transfers and requests, Laporte County Adult Probation requesting to appropriate $900 from funds 71, or 27121.
So there's funds available, but nothing was appropriated. Now you're saying, okay, now you can.
This is the unappropriated.
Permission to spend type of thing, but we also call it inappropriate.
Okay. What's it for?
It's, um, a person that was transferred on probation to another state had to be brought back to Indiana due to the cost of the extradition to have that person brought back.
Okay.
So this money is in that fund. When we collect, uh, the $125 fee for transfer, half of it goes into this fund for this purpose. And the sheriff's department had to, uh, bring someone back and it was a cost of $900.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Novak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kessler. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Man of the hour.
Laporte County Building Maintenance.
Our committee.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
The maintenance department is asking for an additional appropriation of $250,000 to pay monies that are in their rears. So, um, let's a little caveats to that conversation. Let me grab it really quick, sorry. As you know, that we have, we, we went through a whole big changeover in the, in the system. So we have a savings, I hate to use the word savings because we are hiring them back, but with the hiring back, we didn't spend a lot of money this year. with the hiring back, we didn't spend a lot of money this year. So we have $137,500 hours of extra money in the 100 accounts that we did not utilize. That's that HR, that's that, being an airperson, that's the two people that we didn't have that were full-time people that we replaced for quite some time. That's some part-time people we didn't replace for, and that's some janitorial. So, I would say, and I did talk to Angie, I would feel comfortable if we, of course, can't be done tonight, but that we, that we utilize $100,000 of that account 2025 to help supplement this. Why can't you do that? It's just a motion. Transfer from one account to the other. For 100 accounts, I thought, okay, I'm just, generally in 100 accounts, but if you want, that's fine. I'm not here, I'm not here, okay, I'm looking, however you guys want to do it, I understand we should do $100,000 to at least go towards this, okay? I'm not going to debate how you do it. So the other question is, we went along here, and I don't know if, Mike, you were able to come up with that number, because I know that somebody's been absent, but what was the funding left for the Michigan City Courthouse? Do we have some funding left in that? Did we get that number?
I, I remember seeing it this week, and it was about 1.5 million. And I just don't have it, exact number.
Okay, so that's not going to help just for this particular night, tonight, and it will help for tonight, plus.
It's going to help for what you spoke about earlier.
So I'm proposing that we take this, this money that we have at this point and utilize it for the purpose of getting ourselves back into square one, as far as the finance part.
I like the ideas. Well, I mean, from what we presented earlier during public comment or department reports, you had 350 remain to be billed out sometime in the next billing cycle.
They're coming in.
And then we have the remainder of the year to get through.
Yes.
So.
So you're really looking at close to a million dollars?
Yeah.
I mean, with this appropriation to get you through the end of the year. I'm proposing the two accounts, however, first account, I really want to take $100,000 now, because that, she doesn't really need the $37,000, but that $100,000 is comfortable. Unless, maybe somehow we end up hiring somebody, which I don't, we're running at the end of the year anyway, so I don't think, I don't see it happening. And the remainder come out of, out of the fund that we have accumulated. How that comes out, again, I don't care, but I'm proposing that.
Okay.
And that number is safe? They won't need an additional appropriation in the 100s in order to, for the rest of the year?
The 137 is safe, but let's just jump with 100 right now, because we're going through some issues.
Okay.
So, what I'd like to talk about real quickly is how we got here. So we have a budget. I know it's when, it is the amount budget that has been repeated over the last few years through the council budget process. But what we have is we've got issuing work, receiving invoices, and not paying attention to what we have before we ask for the work to be done, in terms of remaining budgets. Where I come from, it's called, you issue a purchase order based on a proposal, you get an invoice against that purchase order after the work's done. And that purchase order issue process includes review of what we have for additional funds to be able to, to support the funding for it. That step is not happening, and that's a major problem here. And I understand that there's been changes in leadership in maintenance, but it seems like overall, it just seems basic operating procedure of spending money before we know that we have it. And that's something we need to resolve within this county.
Mr. President.
Secondly.
Mr. President, you're on that one.
Okay, I'll take, I'll have a first note.
Yeah, please. So, the first, I'm, I'm glad to say it, it doesn't matter, but we hired two incompetent people. That encompasses exactly where we got to the point we are. And those are administrative jobs. Those administrative jobs do terrible work. We, all we did is, we spent a lot of time to try to get this last individual, make sure that person was able to transfer out of it. So, you know, we didn't take care of any of our problems. We don't take care of our problems. It's exactly what happened. We had two incompetent persons, and those incompetent persons cost us this amount of money. It's fraud to me, but it's another conversation to, I know I use that word, because belligerently, they, they took money out of accounts and did not pay bills. And they took, they were paying bills from last year to this year. We didn't file one rule that Port County has set forth. I don't know how we did not get caught in the state board accounts when they do the review. Somehow we didn't. We got lucky. But it's two individuals, and we, and I'm not naming names, but we all know who they are. And they should never have been hired in the first place. Castle does not have any approval of that, so this mention is not us, so. So can I, can I also talk to that, that issue, Mr.?
You can talk to it, and I'll talk.
So, as to, how do we, how do we get here? So Mr. Keel has been beating the drum for a number of years. We really need to look at what the future's going to bring in capital improvements. However, because a lot of times, we've been living hand-to-mouth, every, every week, there's an emergency. How many calls have you gotten, Mr. Karanka, in the last three weeks?
Define calls?
Yes, several. So, so that's part of the problem. Do you know what I mean? Right now, we're cash buyers. Right now, we can't bond anything to just look at what Mr. Keel wants to be able to do, so we can take a building, look at it, determine it, and bring it up. A lot of these buildings are 20, 30 years old. And so all we're doing is being very reactive. And I know that we have broken parts of it, but part of reaction is you end up paying more because you don't have time to think about it, you don't have time to analyze it, you don't have time to shop it. So that's part of the problem. And we have a number of buildings that are just 24/7. We have the jail, we have community corrections, we have the juvenile center. You know, so we have all that going on. Not to say that it can't get better, because it really does need to get better, but you asked why? That's how it happens.
It's part of it, definitely. Mr. Novak, and then we'll go back into our next one.
But the other thing is, is this ad hoc committee that we have for the building maintenance, and, and we pretty much meet on a weekly basis, even if we got, if somebody's got to call in or do something. I mean, we meet pretty regularly. And part of that thing, part of that, part of the process, and I can let Mr. Yagowski, since he kind of runs it, and Jimmy's got the knowledge, I'm just there for.
Good looks. There for good looks.
Right. But, but it's, a lot of these things are the exact things that we're sitting there talking about and doing, and, and trying to figure out how to get this back on track and how to do things. So, you know, how we got here, we just discussed, but we do have a plan to, to make things better. One of them is, if you look at a lot of these expenditures, they're all for things where the preventive maintenance wasn't done. In other words, you know, the valves wouldn't work, a pipe leaked, the showers are leaking, all these different things. And one of the things that this committee's come up with is to, to outsource someone to do all the preventive maintenance at all the major buildings and, and everything else. And that's something that the commissioners would need to actually go out for RFPs, RFQs, whatever they want to go out for. But that's something that needs to be done. And, because it's not, we don't, this is my take on it, and this isn't a jab on anybody, but the maintenance people, some of the maintenance people we have aren't at the level to where they can handle all these things and, and get it accomplished.
You can't expect the maintenance people to handle those things unless you're going to pay them what, what a wage of, you're going to pay somebody that's a, you know, a full professional.
Well, even our previous one.
It's like your lawyer. You don't pay us a wage of a full professional.
Even, here, here.
Maybe you.
You're up next. Even the, even the one that we were, were paying at a higher level wasn't performing. So we found all kinds of things that were, you know.
Agreed. So what do you, I mean, we all know, you have the committee, you need to look at, at budget hearings, what you're going to appropriate next year. Costs have gone up, goods have gone up. We have to look at, you know, we have to try to project as to what's going to happen in the future with some of these buildings. And I, I don't have that kind of knowledge.
So, we know we have a proposal, a work scope, that's been provided regarding a mechanical contractor review to see what it would take. Now, I know that hasn't, just to my knowledge, that's not been sent out yet for review, request for proposals.
Well, Mr. Presswell, I know that I asked for some changes. Was that ever sent back?
It was.
Okay.
I combined them back into HVAC plumbing as one, one.
Then I'll, then I'll get on that.
But I would also ask that we do the same for electrical, and we do the same for basic general construction, right? Because we have three groups of invoices here in front of us that fall under those three categories, those trades.
We're just trying to get one done at a time, right?
Yeah, I understand, but at this point, we have, right now, 600,000 in the rears that are coming to us, that plus, you know, running through the remainder of the year, and, and nothing's going to break between now and December 31st, right?
You mean now and Labor Day?
Yeah.
And just for the, for the public, I just want to say, these items are all, I don't want to say necessarily use the word major, but these are all very important items that needed to be fixed, so that the buildings could stay open and everything else. It wasn't an outside contractor coming in hanging drapes, you know, and, and putting up blinds and, and doing things like that, decorative things, painting. This was, you know, these are major things.
For example, the Superior Three courtroom, there was no air conditioning, and it was 90 some odd degrees. You want to hear, you know, that just doesn't work in 2025. So that becomes urgent. And so then, you change out one condenser and the other condenser saying, I'm jealous. And it fails. And, and you know, that's part of the problem. Now, Mr. Novak knows that because he's probably one of the, no, Mr. Mr., one of the elder statements there. When, when, when one knee goes bad, the other knee goes bad, because it's jealous. That's what we have going on.
All right.
I like you.
Understood.
Maybe that's why I've had three knee replacements. Mine keep going bad.
In all seriousness.
No, I'm being serious.
I know you are. I'm, I'm telling you.
Absolutely.
But realistically, we are trying to perform building maintenance by using outside contractors because of the situation we're in, for whatever reason with the employment and the skillset that we have. We have one or two ways to go forward. We either have to set ourselves up to where we have contracted rates, contracted terms and conditions for the major, for the major trades that we're having to bring in, or we reinvest in the employment of the maintenance staff. We've got to look at budgetary constraints for both of those. We've got to continue to do business, but we've got to do so in acting as a business. And right now, I'm afraid that we haven't been acting like a business when it comes to these accounts.
That's, that's why the committee recommended.
Because we're behind the eight ball.
Yeah.
I mean, because we're behind.
Preventive maintenance, outsourcing it, because we realize, like you said, this is just one piece of it, but, yeah.
Okay, I feel like there's something that's not being said here, which is that the amount that we budget for building maintenance in a year, if you exclude salaries, and you exclude NIPS go bills, and you exclude water and sewers, $500,000. And we're looking at 600 or 700,000 that's already been spent, that was in excess of the budget. So this is on top of it. We've effectively doubled the budget for non-salary and utility bills for building maintenance in one thing. And the money is already spent.
Yeah, but you call that building maintenance. That, this is not building maintenance. This is.
Absolutely.
This is capital improvement and a lot of, a lot of things.
And I haven't gotten into the necessity of these yet, and some of them are necessary. Some of them maybe not so much, but some of them are necessary. The problem is, is that you're coming to us asking for the money after it's already been spent. In every other instance, we approve the money for expenditure before the expenditure happens. We have no choice at this point. The money's been spent. There's a vendor that, that deserves to be paid.
You have no choice now, and you have no choice with the next round of bills. Sorry, my friend.
I know, but the process is still this.
I'm here just bringing the news.
The process is that the council appropriates money, and then it gets spent. So I want to know who authorized these purchases, knowing full well that there was no money in the account.
Some of them go back to September of last year, though.
They run back quite a way.
You can go back and ask.
And we took this long to, to pay them? Yes.
Some of the bills.
There's $24,000 from last September.
We should not be okay with this amount coming to us with no recourse.
I think everyone agrees that this is not the way to do business, and that's what we're trying.
So what type of recourse would you like? Tell me what you'd like. Do you want to take a stick and whack myself, or Angie, or one of the commissioners on the rear end? What type of stick would you, what, what recourse would you want? You guys have to pay the money. Just tell me what kind of recourse you want.
Give us a list of projects that need to be done. Give us a realistic budget request. Both the commissioners and building maintenance gave us budget requests that were the same as the prior year. They know it doesn't encapsulate all of their expenses full well, and so we have no choice.
Because the way that it's been done, with all due respect to Mr. Yagowski, because I was sitting there for eight years, spend what you got, come back, and we'll.
Some of them are from February.
And we'll appropriate. I've heard that comment all the time. But, but I'm with you. But how do we even start doing it when last week, you got calls at the jail regarding the pumps going out? When, how do you, how do you foresee that?
These are more spur of the moments. These aren't planned.
Yeah, and you budget for these. And in a normal organization, in a normal organization, you have a pot of money that's for surprise expenses, and that's what you spend down of.
Then you need to, they probably need, you're going to need to budget 1.2 to 1.5, not counting the NIPS go, not counting anything, based on what, what you see. And if you're going to go out and get an outside contractor, we, I looked at an outside contractor to just do facilities cleaning, and they were north of $1 million, or up in the, you know, very close to $1 million. Because they pay their health insurance, and they pay the legacy, and they pay those things. That's just the nature of what's going on. But I get your point, Mr. Keel. We need, we need to do better.
I have concerns that these, that the requests. I have concerns that the requests that are being made here aren't being vetted properly.
Give me an example of one. Let's talk about, let's get it out. Let's.
Who orders all of these? Are these being ordered by building maintenance? Are they being ordered by other individual elected officials?
I think it's probably both. I think you have building maintenance doing some, and I think you probably have the commission, commissioners that are calling the council for a lot of the emergencies.
Do individual commissioners have the authority to order work when there's not a budget line item to pay for it?
If, if it's necessary, they have to. They're stuck.
Individual commissioners, not the board, can order it on their own.
If, if somebody's in the middle of it, absolutely.
In the middle of it?
In the middle of it. What happened, Mr. Karanka, what happened at the jail?
So we were, I received an evening, an evening phone call regarding a circulation pump for the chiller not functioning to where you were, basically had one whole area of the jail that was not getting.
And what was the temperature outside?
It was about 95 degrees that day.
Okay. And who called you?
I got Commissioner Garmarosa with a gentleman from Airflow Experts.
Okay. So, with that, with that type of situation, are we supposed to call a meeting of the commissioners? What are you, listen, I agree as to a lot of things, but let's just take what, what happened last week. How do we work through that?
So in this case, we walked through it, right? It came down to one of two things. We either had to find a place to relocate the, the residents of the jail, or we do the work to get the work done in order to, and in this particular case, it was hardwire the motor starter for the, for the actual pump to allow it to continue to run, and monitor it over the weekend so that we didn't have an overload.
That was just a quick fix.
That's a quick fix. It's a Band-Aid.
But this is just picking the most, the best example to, to sell the point.
This is the most recent example.
This is an example. There's also invoices.
Can we use another example? Do you want an example? The, the, the pipe that we took care of outside of the, Mr. She did not do it. Mr. Hallfield took care, charge of that, which I give you credit for how you did it. Then we find a buried tank underneath, and yada, 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 yada. These snowballs have been going on for a while, and this happened even years ago. Nothing's new here with, when something breaks, it, it goes back, back, back further. That process was, Mr. Hallfield took the lead example that, which I give you credit for how you did it. So I think it's not just one individual commissioner. I think that whoever wants to get involved, get involved and do the things that, under those emergency situations. I think, I give them credit for taking that, for taking those projects.
So hearing you both for a moment.
This, this is still cherry picking, because there's also invoices in this stack, like adjust LED floodlights in front of the courthouse. Is that an emergency? Install new defibrillators in the following locations.
Hold on one second. I, the floodlights, I would, I, I don't know about that, but I would say that installing the defibrillators is probably a little bit more of an emergency than the floodlights.
The list goes on. You can cherry pick things out of here that look really bad in order to justify the emergency, but that's not how it's supposed to work.
I'm not cherry picking. I just brought up an example that I know of that happened last week.
That's correct.
The tough reality is that of this quarter million dollars, all of it is going to three companies, Mark Whist Electric, Airflow Experts, and La Porte County Project Management, that are all owned by one person in the county.
Okay.
This isn't a contractor issue. This is an internal county issue.
Yes, we need.
He didn't go do this work on his own. Somebody hired him.
Somehow, a quarter million dollars of work ended up in one person's pocket.
He directed it this way and fixed it inside. That's what you need to do.
So to handle this.
We need to get back on track. Do we keep it how we're doing it now with the commissioner and the councilman being involved in each decision at the maintenance department? Is that where we go from here?
You, yeah, right now, you have to. If there's an emergency, otherwise, you have to.
So this is, this has been going on for a long time, because it's, Mr. Yagowski's been president in the past. But when there was an issue, you'd get a call from the commissioner or maintenance, and it, with the maintenance, and they go, hey, we got an issue. This is what it's going to cost. This is what we think it's going to cost. And we'd talk about, okay, where's some money at? Where's funds? Do we have money to cover it? And they go, we got money here, here, or here. These are your options. We go, okay, go ahead and do it. And then we put it on our next agenda. So this is, this is, we just, our preventive maintenance is out the window. I mean, we have, I don't know that we have any right now. And it, we haven't for quite a few years.
And if you don't like policy, you need to go to the commissioners' meeting. This will be the second time I mention today that you need, that if that's the case, this is not part of what we're, we're talking about today. We're going to pass bills that need to be paid. That's, that's what's on the table right now, and we've explained most of it already.
I don't, I don't need to go to the commissioners to lobby them. The council is giving up its responsibility.
The council's not. This has, this has nothing to do with, A, has nothing to do with B. We, we have bills that need to be paid. Those are, has nothing to do with what, how that happened.
And the procedure is that we approve the money before they expend it.
Okay.
Everybody knows. Everybody knows.
But we're not doing that here.
So, what we have in front of us is a request for $250,000 to deal with part of the situation. We're going to have to face another 350-plus, along with figure out how we're going to manage the rest of the year. We're going to need to work together to try to convince the commissioners, and through the, our ad hoc committee, to figure out what we're going to do going forward to get less sloppy and move more like a business. We're, right now, we're, we're trying, we're recovering. We're trying to pull everything back together. We're trying to make it to where we've, we're operating within our means, and we know what projects are going to cost. And some of these, yes, they're repairs. They're not projects. Specifically, the calls that I got last, two Fridays ago. But not everything is that situation. We understand that. So, I think we've all vetted quite a bit of frustration, and, and we're just going to leave that frustration.
Motion to approve $250,000.
Where do you want to go?
I knew you'd ask that.
Then you should.
Well, there's $100,000 that he mentioned that was a transfer.
Well, try.
You can transfer now, or you can do it next month.
I, I suggest because the bills have been, that we pay, and then we'll, the next one, we can use that $100,000 at that. Yeah, we can get a more structured plan. And maybe utilize. Where do you want to take it? Michigan City Courthouse stuff.
Economic.
Probably, probably economic development, but, oh, public safety?
No, can't use public safety.
No.
Unless it's just for the jail.
Yeah, economic development.
Yeah, economic development.
All right. Motion to approve out of economic development for $250,000 for Mr. Mullenhauer. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Mr. Kessler.
Under discussion, I just want to say I will vote no, but it's not to mean that I don't think you should be paid for, Mr. Ski Hat, for the work that you've done. It's just because I disagree with the process. You deserve to be paid because you did the work.
I think the frustration agrees with the process.
Process worked.
Process broken.
We shouldn't give them the money.
What are you gonna do?
Can't leave
Example.
Well, it's easier to say than to do.
There's different ways of that. So with that, I'm calling for the vote. All in favor of the motion presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Mr. President, since I'm all warmed up, would you be so kind as to move me up on the agenda?
Hot date or something?
He's down a second from the last.
You want a picture of my dog at the door waiting for me? I already got a text.
I am, uh
He's usually with me, right?
All right. So let, I will
You're trying to avoid
Meet their requests. So, LaPorte County Board of Commissioners, second to the last item on third page, requesting additional appropriation for legal fees of $150,000. Mr. DiMartino.
Yes, sir. So I was told that there's no money to pay lawyers. There's been, you know, a good amount of litigation that's been going on. If you need an understanding of the billings for this year, I did bring some information. So I would be more than happy to answer your questions.
So refresh my memory, when it comes to your services to the Board of Commissioners, is it a stipend similar to what you received as
No, it's an hourly rate of $175 per hour.
Okay.
And my billing for the year has been $53,000.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. President, the newer council members need to understand, it is underfunded every year. The commissioners have to come back every year. I personally think it's silly, but that's what the council's done for how many years, Mark.
True, but I mean, the whole budget's that way.
Mr. DiMartino, correct me if I'm wrong, this is, this covers more than just your, this covers other board attorneys in some cases?
Yeah, so this covers Mr. Bijji's firm. So that would be Mr. Bijji and the work that he's doing for the Plan Commission and Mr. Friedman's firm.
Do you have the breakdowns for each of the firms?
I do. Drayton, Bijji, Sarugo, and Elliott, $59,875.83. Friedman and Associates, $162,246.75. Myself, $53,430.76. And a bill that was pending for Mr. Jones's firm, $5,792.50. And those were paid in February of this year for his outstanding bills.
Now of those amounts, how much of that is outstanding versus what's covered with the current budget?
This is what's been paid to date.
That's paid to date.
Is this negative? Because this doesn't, 240,000 is what we appropriated before and this is over 240.
I don't know. Unless some of this money was encumbered the year before, because some of the services were for 2024 that weren't built, weren't paid until the first quarter of 2024.
Did you say Mr. Jones's bill is pending?
No, it was pending and it was paid in February.
I just wanted to make sure.
It was an outstanding bill.
Okay, no problem.
Now remember in the Friedman bill, we had that dispute with Mr. Stabo, so there was $10,000, you know, that was in the rears, but
That is, that has now all been settled, right?
All resolved, yep.
All right. And we believe the 150,000 will keep the commissioners whole from now till the end of the year?
It's my understanding that they took the number and they divided it by the months that are left and they can, and then multiplied and came up with that number. Whatever number Mr. Keel had, divided by eight, multiplied to the end of the year.
Okay.
I think we should break this into pieces and do it periodically rather than all at once.
You mean by?
Rather than appropriating the whole amount through the end of the year, have a, so we're checking in on a regular basis that you guys are keeping, that they're not gonna, you know, spend vastly more than expected.
Make a motion.
There's something I was looking for in here because I'm pretty sure Diane sent us an email that said that it was in the negative.
It is what it says. Would you like a copy of it?
Yeah, I was looking for mine, but I didn't see it in there.
Was that your check, Mr. Bijji, that was in the negative?
How do we get into the negative?
Something that's small, you don't, you don't know.
I, I don't know. Well, I, I don't process the bill.
If, if I may, it, it's kinda like the maintenance and repairs. You don't never know how many lawsuits the county's gonna have to defend.
Yeah, but we, we can't go into the negative. SBOA doesn't allow us to go negative.
I guess what he's saying is, is paying the bills before we have the appropriation.
Paying the bills, correct.
Yeah, I'm talking about paying the bills. You can't, you can't, you're never gonna have a smooth legal fee, okay? You're, you can't budget it.
I know.
How do you, how do we end up paying negative bills? It doesn't end with your, that's not the billing process. How do we end up going negative? We're not supposed to, unless you have actual money in, money out. Not you, not you, not Mr. Friedman. How do we do that?
I don't, I don't know.
That's not
But she didn't actually state she paid bills in the negative. She's just saying we are currently negative, but it could be with what they're sitting on.
Well, yeah, because some, we don't get, the lawyers don't get paid every month sometimes.
Mr. Rosenbaum, is it possible that it went negative?
It happens, okay.
If you know the staff, you know it's unlikely.
Okay. So, what's your motion?
What was the request?
150.
Motion to approve 50,000 out of Riverboat.
See you next month.
That's the point.
All right.
Yeah.
Bring the puppy next time.
Someone wants to
Motion to amend, I'm open to it. I have a motion for 50,000 out of Riverboat from Mr. Keel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kessler. Any further discussion? All in favor of 50,000 out of Riverboat, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks for the accommodation.
What's that? There's one, Nate?
Two.
Thank you.
Three.
Three.
Mullenhauer, Novak, Galski.
I'd have gone with a different number, but that's just
It's 75, man. 75.
That's what I was gonna say.
That wasn't that bad.
Thank you, Jim.
All right. So, moving back to the original batting order. LaPorte County Animal Shelter, $61,332.64 requesting fund 4,100 appropriated as follows. So it's unappropriated 4,100 to the other services and charges account.
Good evening. Brooke Heggabine, interim director for LaPorte County Animal Shelter.
All right.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make it through 2025. So I'm hoping that the rest of this fund can be appropriated for use.
Okay. How are things going out there?
It's going.
All right.
Always be better.
It could be better, but we're getting there.
All right.
We're catching up.
They got a great dedicated
Yep. All right. Any questions or thoughts or motions from the council?
Most approved.
Most approved by Mr. Novak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kessler. Question by Mr. Keel.
What is, what's the reason that we need extra money here? Did you guys spend more than anticipated or, I know there's been some turmoil there.
This is out of there.
So, I mean, the biggest thing was that a lot of the budget at the beginning of the year went towards paying 2024. So bills weren't being paid last year and we had to spend a lot of the funds catching up.
There seems to be a, what's the word I'm looking for?
Theme?
Theme here, but that we need to fix in the county is, you know, at the end of the year, we need to
Come, make sure we're paid up.
Yeah, this isn't directed at you, you're new, I understand. We should not be holding bills and then paying them with next year's money. That's not good.
Correct. And, and actually I'm still finding bills, so.
Keep working.
Or quit looking.
Right. I, trust me, I haven't gone looking. They find me.
Kidding, kidding.
All right. So there's a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay. Thank you.
I just want to state they have record numbers of animals out there this year too.
Yep.
Stop off.
Good to know.
Stop off. Pick up a kitty.
I already got one last year.
Volunteers, so.
Good.
Yes.
All right. Finally made it to the last page. LaPorte County EMS requesting additional appropriation of $205,000 total. $150,000 for overtime, 35,000 for computer replacement, 20,000 for winter coats slash uniforms. Mr. Fistermaker.
So number one, the 150 is to keep us from going into the red. I kinda feel like the actual number is gonna be closer to 200, but to kinda Mark's point from earlier, I think we can strip some, I'm down four paramedics right now. So I think we can strip some to hopefully make up that 50,000 and have the 150 carry us through the rest of the year.
When you mean strip some, it's transfer from salaries that are unused into overtime?
Correct. Yep, I'm currently down four paramedics. I do have two that are in the hiring process, but not in spots yet. Two on FMLA, one out on workman's comp for at least another two months. And then there's always overtime.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Novak.
Just gonna talk about the overtime?
I was thinking, well, let's, let's talk all three of them or?
Talk all three.
Let's talk all three. Go on, moving on to the computer replacement.
The computer replacements are twofold. The original per our computer replacement is for two printers and five tablets for our five support vehicles. We did the ambulances last year. This is what's left from that. We have found that with the new tablets, they do not communicate well with the old modems. Our modems were placed in all the vehicles in 2018. What brought this to light is they're talking about PSAP to PSAP communication or 911 center to 911 center. And they're doing a pilot program that say we have an ambulance that's closer to, I'll use Pine Township School just because we have a mutual aid agreement there. If they, if Porter County can see our ambulances is closer, under this pilot program that they're trying to do, they have to dispatch our ambulance because it is the closest appropriate ambulance to that location. However, to do that, you have to have AVL or the Automated Vehicle Location. Right now, we're not talking to the 911 center because the modem won't talk to the laptop to get that information or to the tablet. So that's kinda what brought this all about is it's just, it's a seven-year-old modem talking to a brand new lap, uh, brand new tablet. It's, it's
So this is, it's more modems are built into this price?
Correct. Yep. And the coats, they're old. They're seven years old. They're that high vis, yellow. What we originally bought was a, it's called a three-in-one parka and it's got an interior liner, unzips, you have the, the outer shell. Nobody wears the outer shell. They all wear the inner liner. Most of them probably don't even know where the outer shell is and they were almost $400 apiece back in 2018. We're not gonna do that again. That just, that just doesn't make sense to me. So we found another, we'll call it a three seasons jacket. It does have a removable liner, but it's a thinsolet deal. Like you can't wear one, you know, independent of the other. It, it just is a, a winter liner, the, then, you know, a spring fall jacket per se and it's half the price. So I have on here, you know, for the, the winter coats, 20,000. It's a not to exceed, I really feel like it's gonna be closer to like 13,000.
I stopped over today and the, the winter jackets, the high vis is not vis anymore.
Yeah.
So it, it, in their, in their line of work, it has become an essential issue.
Okay.
I say, I say it's a safety issue, to be honest with you. Um, I did ask the five tablets, how much were the five tablets?
Uh, the, the tablets with new mounts and all that was 18,000. Again, I think I can do a little better than that. Uh, I think it's gonna be closer to 17. And the modems were 15,000. They're roughly 750 apiece and we have them in all 12 ambulances and five support vehicles.
So realistically, computer replacements and winter coats are both not to exceed?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm in, I'm intrigued by the, the computer replacement. The, I've always wondered why, why the EMS is only, you know, is within the county as opposed to, you know, flowing from other counties. But what will this end up doing in the long run where maybe we're closer to a population center in another neighboring county? Are we gonna end up with a different call volume? Does some of ours get shifted to someone else?
Essentially, we could. This is new legislation that was written with not a lot of thought. I'll put it that way. Kind of a theme there too, right?
Theme there too.
So there's, they're trying to do a pilot program. This is something that already happens in Indianapolis or in Marion County because you have several large departments. It's not as common in like our setting. However, there are some counties around us that I'm sure you've read about in the news recently that have some issues regarding their 911 center and some of their services. So I could see the pilot program potentially going there, which is gonna suck us right into it. I don't particularly wanna be a part of it. My point to that is we're coming back from, pick your hospital, Northwest Health, Porter, Memorial Hospital, South Bend, neither one. We've taken a rig out of our county to transport to one of those facilities. Now we're coming back into the county, but because we're driving by a location that there's a call for service, under this, we would have to respond to that call in another jurisdiction.
So we could be prolonged in another county because each time we leave the hospital, we get picked up by, that does not seem like
I, I do not agree with it at all. I need those ambulances back in our county. We, you know, we don't, but if they make it a state law, they make it a state law. Now, they did tread very lightly on this and state that their intention was not to say, LaPorte County, you must do this. That's why they wanna do the pilot program to see what works, what does, they're more interested in what doesn't work. And then make an assumption based off of the, the pilot program. Does it make sense to do it here? It's not gonna be an all in one. It's not gonna be like, well, it worked here, so it's gotta work here. If that makes sense.
The problem comes, the problem comes in is, we talked about this today, is that St. Joe County, for example, has over exceeded its population for, for the amount of ambulances. You know, for a while, they took care of us in Rowan Prairie. But to long story short is that we may be required to start taking care of them because they do not have the services available in that area.
Okay.
So, keep us posted on what happens.
Yeah, they will. They, they're looking at applications through the end of the year for the pilot program, implementing the pilot program throughout '26 and then getting their findings together in early '27. So, and that just all came out, I don't know, the days have run together, Thursday of last week, I believe. So, I mean, it's a fairly new, new thing, so.
Okay. So before I ask for a motion, Mr. Auditor, if we make this as one motion, is that gonna be good to keep track or you want individuals?
It doesn't matter what you do. It, I mean, doesn't ma, it doesn't matter if it's all for one or
You got it all set for your count numbers and such. Okay. All right. What's pleasure?
Motion to approve the overtime to 150 and not exceed 35,000 on computer replacement and winter coat uniforms. 20,000 on that.
Anything, the last one is a not exceed as well?
Not exceed as well. The last tier, not to exceed.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Kessler.
Second.
Out of what?
Out of what fund?
Out of what fund?
Public safety, I guess.
Public safety.
Submotion by Mr. Kessler out of public safety lit.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mullenauer. Any further discussion? All in favor of approval out of lit, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
LaPorte County Prosecutor requesting transfer from 2501 user claims to 2500 law enforcement equipment and 2500 capital purchases.
State Police for 2500, or 25, Sean Fagan, LaPorte County Prosecutor. This could be in the, we had part of a long... It's taken a couple of months. We've been having other things to worry about. So the 25K is anticipated to go help. The Lowell Post and mainly the Lowell Post, since they worked the toll road, to help them buy speed equipment in order to track speeders on such, since they are a heavy, heavily involved law enforcement agency. We just have been delayed in doing that project. The overall bid that they have, quote, that they have, is about 75,000 for them. Since we're a major part of that, we would contribute a little bit to help with that project, since their budget is being restricted on the state level. So that's kind of what we're going toward.
And for information for the public, the Lowell Post, it's dispatched officers to our region for this?
Yeah, mainly Lowell Post, uh, they do a lot of stuff, the toll road. They have different posts that do things on the toll road.
In LaPorte County?
Right, yes, sir. Porter, LaPorte Lake.
Mr. Yagowski?
Mr. Deferal Funds.
Yes, sir.
Right, Deferal.
So everybody knows.
Sorry. This has nothing to do with you, but I know, because you're asking, it does. As a strong person that was opposed to the toll road purchase, the toll road was supposed to reimburse our state police. That was part of the deal. Again, I don't know, I don't quite understand why they're not doing that. This is, this is a private entity that we're reimbursing money for. That was part of a contractual agreement. I would like to see that before this money gets dissipated to... You know, outside agencies, I understand, but I do not see to a private entity. Toll Road is not owned by anything of Indiana, but they do, are required to reimburse us for the state police that are out there. Why are we taking care of that issue? That's just the question.
Hmm.
I know you, you don't know that answer right now, but I just...
Can you, can you research that?
I can try.
I, I think the post for the toll road is over in Elkard. Ocean or Elkard?
The Bremen, the Bremen Post, or, yeah, Bremen does a lot of stuff, too. They kind of work.
Toll Road's Mishawaka.
Yeah. So we need to see something I, I...
It'd be 20 and 30 is who would cover out of Lowell. Indiana State Police on the Indiana Toll Road or out of Mishawaka.
I, I would like this, at this point...
On 331.
At this point, and I know you can do whatever you want, but I could table this to the next meeting. That, you get, it doesn't need it right this second, so I could table this to the next meeting, so you can get us the information. Because that's not the right information. It's not your fault. Somebody's giving you the wrong information. Lowell's not, that's not, does not take care of the toll road.
If Lowell's going to do 90, 80, 94, 20, and 30, along with the north-south corridors, I'd have no problem. But toll road should not be going to Lowell, because Lowell, the Indiana Toll Road, not maybe the western part, out of LaPorte, but everybody LaPorte and east comes out of Mishawaka.
Mr. Prosecutor, are you comfortable waiting a month on this?
No. I still, they're motion, motion to table.
Second.
Motion to table, Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Mullenauer. All, all in favor of tabling the law enforcement equip, equipment, $25,000, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Yeah, Novak, Kessler. All right, so down to capital purchases repairs.
Uh, can I, can I stop you right there?
I can't talk about the previous one, because it's...
No, 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 no. I'd like to withdraw from consideration the 15,000 for capital improvements. Given that you're spending all this money on building and stuff, you guys can pay for it. We were going to give money toward this, but I don't think that's a good use of my funds right now, so if you don't mind, I'd like to withdraw that from consideration, please.
Mr. President, if that is the case, he's at, he's at agreement with the vehicle, then we'll withdraw the vehicle, so that, so we'll, we'll get our attorneys to talk to him. So we will withdraw the vehicle promotion that we were supposed to take care of. So there was an agreement here. If you want to withdraw the agreement, I have, I have, I know for a fact, so I'm telling you right now, we will withdraw, and you won't have that, you might have the purchase for that car. So there's, I think that if that's the case, he wants to do it, so be it.
You know, I mean...
So be it. We have an agreement, sir. We have an agreement, sir.
What was this for? Because the, the request doesn't actually say what it's for, so I don't, I don't know until you tell.
So there's a giant window that's been broken, that has a giant crack upon the fifth floor. It was cracked. We were approached for it and hemming and hawing about it. And then we, um, the building next door, or the, uh, building department had one of their windows damaged by some object, so...
Right, it's broke inside.
Thank you. So, in trying to figure out how to fix it, you know, funds being, we were being responsible and saying, hey, we're going to contribute. We've been having this discussion over the last couple of months, and then several things have happened. Don't want to get into all the details, but, you know, I mean, it, it's, I'm just... Yeah.
I wouldn't take the motion to table for the previous item as, as a no. I don't think this is death by tabling. I, I think this is just something where more information could change opinions.
It's clarification needs. We need clarification on the first one.
I'm just...
We have an agreement, so...
It's to the APS vehicles?
We have an agreement with the 15,000 to the, to the vehicle. The commissioners have done it. The attorney was, was involved in it. If you're going to, if you're going to be that way, then we, apparently, we're going to play that way the rest of the year. Because that's, that's the way you want to play.
Well, no, well, when our APS vehicles were pretty much taken from us by the county commissioners.
This, this is, that's a commissioner, so if you want to do the game...
You know, we're just...
We had an agreement. So...
How about we table the second one? Bring them both back next month. We don't do anything rash, and we can see where it goes with some more information. Does that sound fair?
Um, if I may. So part of this agreement in terms is to try to lump together two repair projects in one with a single crane rental, and one late, get a group together that makes two window replacements on the fifth floor, correct? Yours is on the fifth or fourth?
Fifth.
So two fifth-floor replacements, they require outside utility work, because it's reaching over power lines. Am I stealing your thunder, sir?
No, you're...
Would you mind walking through that for us real quick?
Are you okay if we proceed with the $15,000? Are you still withdrawing?
I just... Go ahead.
Motion to approve the $15,000.
I'll second it.
Motion approved by Mr. Novak, second by Mr. Keel. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of approval, signify by saying aye.
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 Appro... It's been a night. Opposed? Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Presskier.
LaPorte County Extension Office with the permission to transfer for...
Just so everybody knows, it, it was, oh, we did move that to a transfer.
Yes, we did.
And I do, I do have that account number for you, Mr. President.
Oh, if you do, if you wouldn't mind adding that.
1,000 dash 1, 0, 1, 1, 7, dash 0, 0, 0, 0, 0, dash 0, 1, 3, 3.
Motion to approve.
Well, it's good to him out first. $4,150 out of that account.
You just gave me shit here through all of that, and you're not even going to ask me one question, Randy?
What do you need it for?
Wait, 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 after all of this?
Start that. Don't ask that question.
We already did that one.
Names and department?
Kelsey Watarama, Purdue Extension, CED.
And Kathy Yelman, Purdue Extension, Office Manager.
After everything you've seen, you want to be grilled?
No, I really don't.
So those are the two hard questions for you.
Perfect.
All right. What's pleasure to counsel? Motion from Mr. Novak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kessler. Thank you. All in favor of approval of the transfer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the easy one.
Thank you.
And, uh, LaPorte County Auditor requesting to transfer a riverboat distribution to rainy day fund per ordinance in the amount of $1,162,674, $647.95. Motion approved by Mr. Yagowski, second by...
Second. I'll take that one.
Jimmy took the second.
Second by Mr. Bressel.